...for the property, it's a triangle shape you can see in the magic marker dark line around the outside. There's a small store on the right side and then there's three sets of pumps out in the, to the west of the store. Again, it's a small triangle piece of ground. It has a roughly 25 by 36 cent, 36 foot retail building that sits on the east side of the site with three gas stations west of the store. If you've been out there, it's virtually flat and covered with pavement except for a few grass areas around the perimeter. Access to 24 Highway, there's two curb cuts on 24 Highway. As you can see there, on the north on Independence Avenue, basically it's open for most of its width there except for an island in the middle and rest fits open. While the proposed zoning of C2 for this property is consistent with the recommended residential neighborhood land use designation outlined by the plan, realistically it's unlikely to be used for residential purposes. This property is also noted in the 2006 24 Highway corridor study as part of the site for a redevelopment opportunity sandwiched between the Mount Washington Gateway area and the Winter Road 24 Highway intersection revitalization location. Again, this is a comprehensive plan that shows this is a neighborhood residential. Okay, here we're looking east at the front of the site, to the east at the front of the site. Again, there's a little store off in the distance. There's three sets of pumps, one under the canopy and then two to the right that are open. This is a side view of the location. Again, the, the small store there on the right and the gas pumps there on the left. It's a commercial building on the, on the right there. This is the commercial, the edge of the commercial building that was shown on the last slide. This is it. I don't know what the history of this is or what's in there exactly, but it's been commercial for a long time. And this is zoned commercial, just that triangle piece has been zoned R12. Here we're looking east down US 24 Highway. If you've been out there, you know how this looks. We're in one of the driveways that lead into the site. This is looking south across 24 Highway. It's part of the property that's owned by the cemetery. And this is a little, now a bus stop that I understand was previously a trolley stop. It's, it's looking to the, looking to the west down 24 Highway. And then this is a building that was, that's directly west of the site before it was a contracting company for a HVAC company. It was a Dairy Queen and before that I think it was some other sort of restaurant. And then there is a small church just north of the site across Independence Avenue. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request.
Thank you. I remember the Dairy Queen, but I didn't know about the trolley. Thank you. Would the applicant please come up? And state your full name and your address, please.
Oh, Jenny Belbasi. I live on A325 West 120 Terrace, Opelika, Arkansas.
Thank you. Just tell us anything you would like us to know.
Well, we've been running this building since 2018 and just got the property and planning to be able to modernize the building. You know, the building is very old, it's coming apart. So I came with a surprise that we need to rezone the building to be able to make improvements. We, the store is just too small for storage. Sometimes, you know, the delivery guys leave stuff outside. We need to keep cleaning. The trash is in a part of the building that is very difficult to access, so we just need to be able to just make it a little bit bigger on both sides to be able to have more room for storage and put more refrigerators inside and a bigger bathroom.
That sounds fantastic.
Yeah, the bathroom is just for one very, very, very tiny.
It is little.
Yeah, it is very little.
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, I think I read this, but I just want clarification from staff that truly the reason for some of this rezoning is to correct the zoning.
Clean up in aisle seven.
So...
That's correct. We're trying to fix an air that went back, I don't know, 50 years or more. I don't know the history of it. It was, it was on that way in, what, 1965 and my guess it was probably that way before. But when you get back into the early 60s, the zoning of the city gets kind of sketchy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I did hear you, so the, the corridor improvement does go all the way down past her, correct?
Do you mean the one that Modot is doing?
Yeah.
No, it does not go to this site.
Okay.
It does not go this far. I believe it stops, well, it says in the report...
291 and River.
That does it?
Yeah, that's right.
Rude.
East of, east of here.
Okay. All right.
I do have another question then. I do believe, just to ask, ask you. You did mention that this was part of the revitalization plan, so are you talking about something different?
Yeah, something different. What we had, we had a case a couple of months ago that it was in an area of 24 Highway where they're actually doing sidewalk and trail and driveway improvements. That project does not go to this far, but it was talked about in an earlier case, completely different.
All right, thank you. Still an improvement. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions of staff or discussion? I'm going to close, oh wait, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, is there any more discussion, questions of staff, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 22-100-18.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle? Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number 22-100-18 rezoning of 9,300 East US 24 Highway has been approved. Best of luck and thank you for alerting us so we could clean up our zoning. Feels good. Okay, next case is case 22810-02 preliminary development plan at approximately 4505 Little Blue Parkway. Ready for a report?
Yes, this is an application by the Mid-Continent Public Library to build a, a new branch at the corner of Heartland Avenue or Heartland Drive and at the Little Blue Parkway. As you can see from the vicinity map where its location is, it's easy to say that it's across from the new apartment complex out there at Little Blue Parkway, along Little Blue Parkway and then it's also south of the Eastland Center which is on the other side of the drive, on the other side of Little Blue Parkway. This is the surrounding zonings for the site. To the, to the west across the Little Blue Parkway is some property that is owned multifamily, even though it's actually a church. And then to the, to the, I guess you call it to the northeast is the apartment complex that's just actually zoned for office. And then there's commercial property along where the, the restaurant, the corner cafe and the hospital, the children's hospital is. And to the south is the Mobile Home Park that's actually zoned agriculture. And then there's some meandering property that's owned by the counties part of the Little Blue Trees Park that has various zonings. The church to the southeast of the site is actually zoned multifamily as well. This is the aerial photograph of the site. Again, you can see the apartment complex is just newly completed there. The red triangle shows the ground to be basically undeveloped. It's, it has a heavy tree line along the south. The northern part is brush covered somewhat with some open areas. Again, to the south you have the Mobile Home Park and then to the southeast you have the church as you can see. And then across the Little Blue Parkway you have the church complex and then there's also a senior housing thing directly west of the site. Don't know what happened to our thing here. We're back. Here's the comprehensive plan, this entire area is designated as mixed use. Again, the pinkish triangle shows the location of the site and the property around it. Okay, this, this site along with the other land and along Little Blue Parkway corridor was annexed in the city in the mid 70s with an agriculture zoning. Later sometime in the 80s, the Tri-City Ministry had a plan for the site along with the other lands along there that they owned. The idea, and it was zoned RP3 which is moderate density multifamily. And later we see, they later received a special use permit to have a group home for the disabled there, but it was never constructed. Since the property was annexed into the city, the site has received little development activity. From the high point on the west side of the site, it slopes to the east with the low point being in the southeast corner of the five and a half acre site. Small stream, stream and significant tree cover exists along the south half of the property. Mid-Continent Library seeks to construct its eastern Independence Branch at this location. The library building is proposed to be 12,770 square feet, multi-sided structure facing Heartland Drive. The exterior of the building will consist of gray brick veneer composing most of its sides with a tan vertical wall siding and complementing, composite cladding on the north elevations. Windows are also being employed on the south and west elevations. A feature incorporated with this branch's design is a drive-through window on its south elevation. With a lot area of over five acres, the branch has room to expand. Here we can see the location, the site plan. Again, at the top of the screen is the intersection of Heartland Drive and Little Blue Parkway. You come down the street and there's a drive entrance that exit, that enters the site. Parking is on the right, the library is to the west slightly there. The drive-through is immediately adjacent to the building on the south side, or I guess that would be east side, it's at an angle here, so. Staff is, they did show a second drive onto this, onto this design originally. Staff is not recommending in favor of this drive, we believe it should be removed. Here's the elevations of the building. Because the building is a slightly polygon shaped, there's multiple elevations. Again, you have the, the top elevation that's on the right is the actual side of the building that has the drive-through. That little black box that you see there is actually the drive-through window. And then the other side is the side that faces the south, the woods that's behind the site. And then these other elevations are along the northwest, northeast and northwest. And the lowest one is the primary elevation. You can see it says library and that is the brown siding that they talked about. Parking for the new building is, requires 32 square, 32 spaces, they are providing 50, which two of those being ADA spaces. Again, this currently shows two access points on the Heartland Drive. The city is requiring the Southern Drive here as you can see, to be eliminated with the primary reasons being it's, it's within a curve and will have visibility, safety concerns and the proposed drive lacks adequate spacing distance between the intersection and other driveways. The landscaping plan, which we'll see here in a second, appears to meet the city code requirement for this type of project, being in triangle shaped lots with streets adjoining the northeast and northwest sides, the lots of Mobile Home Park on its outside. The plans show the library intends to retain much of the existing tree line undergrowth between the new building and the park. Roughly 65 feet of vacation, of vegetation will be retained which provides more than adequate buffer. The library expands its building here later, the topic will have to be revisited. This is the landscape plan. This is only the overstory plan, the tree plan. The understory plan which is the bushes and so forth are actually divided into three pieces, so I just provide the over, the overstory plan which is shows the tree cover that they're planting on. Water sanitary and sewer and electrical services surround the property inadequate to serve the project. However, IPL, the Independence Power Line, indicates it has no means to provide electrical services here currently due to the lack of transformer stock. Shipment for this, shipment time for the new inventory is unknown. The proposed addition is a step towards implementing a strategy of Independence for All which is to achieve livability, choice, access, health and safety through quality built environment. The site, this site along with other properties in the area designated for mixed use by the plan, it should feature a variety of townhomes, multifamily dwellings which is across the street and local commercial and personal health activities including institutional uses like a library. Okay, here we're on the, I guess it would be the northwest corner of the intersection of Little Blue Parkway and, boy, excuse me, the road here, whatever it is. Heartland Park, yeah, I'm sorry. We're looking directly, diagonally across this intersection, that is the land area where the, the library is going. Okay, here we're actually standing on Little Blue Parkway looking down into the site. The parkway is about 10 to 12 feet higher than the library's property at this point. Here we're looking south down Heartland Drive or Heartland Avenue and the properties, the library's property is on the right and further down to the left is the apartment complex. Here we're on Heartland Drive looking to the southwest, off the distance there where the red tree is, is, or the height of where the highway is, a Little Blue Parkway. Here's another site that shows the little area where the library building will be approximately. And another shot again that shows the tree line in the background which is the buffer that between the library and the Mobile Home Park to the south. This is the apartment complex that was just completed less than a year ago across from the site. And this is the church that is southeast of the site. And this is part of the Mobile Home Park that's directly south of the site. Here we're looking west up Heartland Drive at the church complex in the distance and here we're looking southwest down Little Blue Parkway. And this is the campus across the Little Blue Parkway from the site. The driveways line up with Heartland. Staff does recommend approval of this preliminary development plan request with the following conditions. A new sidewalk, sidewalk needs to be added to the end of the property par, slash parcel line which is Valley View Road. The sidewalk needs to tie into the existing sidewalk along Little Blue Parkway, move it closer to the public right of way line. Independence Power Line has no way to provide service currently due to the lack of transformer stock. Shipment time for this inventory is indefinite. Then remove the southern driveway entrance into the site on, on the south elevation to provide a faux window or something to break up the, the blank wall expanse. Six is all roof mounted equipment must be screened by a parapet equal to the height of the, of the parapet. On the final landscaping plans include a table listing the required plantings along with the planting shown on the plan. The trash enclosure must be designed, construction, constructed per city code 14 50308 and relocated to the rear side as much as possible. And, and then this preliminary development plan has not been reviewed for final engineering design compliance. All development engineering must be designed in accordance with City of Independence standards and specifications prior to the approval of the final development plan.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we bring the applicant up?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions here. Hey, staff, on the sidewalks, are we continuing sidewalks all the way down Heartland on the whole property?
Well, this is, this would be, they'd be responsible for all the sidewalks along their property, yes.
Well, but I'm, so, I mean, I don't see it on the drawing, I just want to make sure sidewalk is going all the way down Heartland. You talked about extending it up to Little Blue, I just want to make sure it's going down Heartland.
Yes, it's going, it's really hard to tell or you can't really see well on this site plan, but...
Okay.
On your other plan, it's not shown either, but that was our requirement, that was one of the conditions.
Okay, so it is going all the way down Heartland. Okay, now, are they, well, the second entrance, I can see the reason for it. I mean, I think it's going to be for like trash trucks and stuff to get in and out. I mean, I don't know, have you talked to them about that before they brought them up? I mean...
I think when we met with them several months ago, that was an issue that was discussed at the time. From what I remember is we were not in favor, I guess, of that issue at that time and then later when they actually turned in an application, we reviewed it further and came up with reasons why it should not be there.
Your reasons for the safety concerns, you say turning out there. I mean, I'd, I'd see why they want ones for the trash trucks and trucks to get in and out in circle radius there because it doesn't look like they have much room. I don't know where they bring truck, I know some of them bringing in trucks, so I didn't know. That's, okay. That's it right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I was told that we may have lost the live feed for this meeting, but we are recording the audio.
Okay. So everybody make sure your mic is on when you're talking and your mic is off when you're not talking intentionally. Will the applicant please come forward and state your name and your address, please?
My name is Brad McKenzie with SAP Design Architects, 1100 Main Street, Kansas City, Missouri, representing Mid-Continent Public Library today.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everybody, this was thankfully possible by passing Prop L back in 2017 and part of that was promised to get a library in East Independence. We looked at a lot of different properties with Mid-Continent Public Library. This one turned out to be the best possible one we could, we could obtain, so we started proceeding with this. We had some conversations with staff early on to make sure it was going to be feasible. They said that it would, so we proceeded with the design. The exceptions that staff have noted, we are already in the process of taking care of those. And to answer one of the questions, the second drive is something the library really likes because they're open seven days a week and when they have to go in and maintain the drive and the parking lot, they like to shut down one drive and utilize the second drive. So they were really adamant that we try to get that through planning commission, but we have been told traffic doesn't like it, so it is what it is. But that's the purpose for, for that drive. They like to do that at all of their libraries. The transformer is another big issue. It's a crazy time right now, we've not experienced this before. We're working with J.E. Dunn Construction. Right now, they are in the process of trying to track down transformer. Obviously, we would not start construction if we don't have that because they'll need power for, for doing the construction. We actually talked a little bit already with IPL and they said that there isn't even power close for us to use for construction, so we've got to get that squared away before, before we start. We think we have some ideas on that. One of the things too that we wanted to talk about was that trash enclosure. We are planning to move that a little bit further back down the, the drive lane. We have some additional drawings if you guys want to see any of that, some progress we've made since this. It's on the screen, okay. Okay, so these images are to talk about the roof screening. So with this building sitting down from Little Blue, screening the rooftop equipment was very important to us regardless of zoning requirements. So you can see the bottom right is, as you're approaching Little Blue from, I guess, kind of the southwest. And that tall wall on the front is in large part designed to screen all of the rooftop equipment from Little Blue. Unfortunately, in, in the original submittal for the, for the PDP, we had some rooftop equipment shown further back on the roof that has since been coordinated with our engineers and moved, so it's all immediately behind. And I think we have, yeah, there's a roof plan. So you can see down at the lower right of that is the roof hatch to get to the roof and then that takes you up to where all the equipment is tucked in behind that wall. Then the view on the lower left is just from a little bit further down Little Blue. The view in the top right is actually from Heartland as you're coming down from Little Blue, again showing, we have the entrance popped up so that it hides the rooftop as well. And then the, one in the top left is from the entrance down on Heartland. So we worked really hard to make sure that the equipment can't be seen from anywhere except for from the trees, so this is information we haven't talked further with, with staff to make sure that that is suitable, that we don't also need to screen it from the trees, but just want to let you know that we are working to address those issues already. I think those are the only, oh, this is the facade that staff had recommended. We put something on to break up the expanse of brick and you can see the trash enclosure in the bottom left where it's located now, which staff didn't like. We had it located there originally just so that it was easier to get to for the trash truck, but we have located them further down. I don't, I don't have a mouse, but if you go down the drive like you're going to go into the, to the drive up window, we've put trash enclosures down there before, trash trucks go down then back out. So to accommodate that, we'll just move the trash enclosure down a little bit further. Our civil engineer is here as well and he has a plan that kind of shows that if, if anybody would like to see it. But we'll of course as well work with staff if we need to to figure out what we want to do to this facade to break it up. We'd rather not put a faux window, but if that expanse of brick's not acceptable, we'll come up with, with something to do on there, so. Any questions for me?
Would you consider like some type of relief art or something on there that would just add interest to the building?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would want to come up with something that makes sense rather than just kind of tacking something on. One of the things we looked at is between the drive up window and you can kind of see that dark box, that's the employee entrance door and it's kind of recessed, is we could add another window there that functions well. If something more is required further down the corner, yeah, we would come up with maybe a different color brick or something in it if, if that's going to be a requirement. We just, like I said, we, we want to think about what it needs to be so that it doesn't just like something we've tacked on to the building. This is the side of the building that's not highly visible. You can see it from Heartland if you're coming more from the south, but most people coming into the library won't see it, but...
They will not see it, is that what you're saying?
Correct, unless they go to the drive up, obviously.
Got a question?
Yeah.
So you're, you're suggesting, and the planes are hard to read on the screen, but you're suggesting trash enclosure essentially moves to the southwest and sort of in line with that drive. drive.
Correct.
So, they'll go down, they'll pick up, and they'll back up. Have you had any conversations with trash company to see what their schedule's going to be? My only real concern is if it's coming in during normal business hours, you're going to block ability to get to the drive through and then backing up a trash truck into backup into traffic, and people that are coming and going could be a little tenuous?
We, I don't know, Terry. We have not at this point. One of the things that we have worked, this is the thirty-fourth branch we've done for Mid-Continent Public Libraries, that's one of the things we've always coordinated as well as their deliveries because Mid-Continent's deliveries are in the same area. So, it's something that we will coordinate with the trash company. It's an operational thing for Mid-Continent as well, so it's important.
Okay. As far as the south drive, I also understand why the south drive was good from the standpoint of the trash deliveries. Is it the city staff position that they just do not want a trash enclosure visible at all?
Well, the city code says, from what I remember, that the dumpster should be in an inconspicuous place and not open to the streets, or viewed from the, the gate shouldn't be viewed from the public streets.
Okay.
So, we try to, and we know that's not always possible, but we try to alter them, shift them around in some fashion, or put them further back in the site as possible.
Understood. I completely understand where you're coming from on the transformer, probably switch gear and other long lead items. This is impacting your ability to move the project forward?
Yes, at this point. We, our hope is to go ahead and apply for a building permit as soon as we get city council approval for the final development plan. So, we're working diligently right now to line up a transformer.
Okay. And then as far as the roof mounted equipment, I appreciate hiding it behind the facade. Is it the city staff position that all four sides needs to be concealed, or is it just the primary view?
Well, I think that it says all four sides, but I'll have to look at their design. I have not seen it before tonight, so it's, you know, it sounds like a possibly workable deal.
Okay. I believe that's all I've had. I've enjoyed watching your projects go up. They're nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any of the questions of the applicant? I think you answered most of the recommendations, which obviously you're comfortable with because you're working on them.
I did have one question, more question for staff. It may be a typo on number six on the report. All of roof mounted equipment must be screened by a parapet equal to the height of the parapet. Should that be equipment?
That's right.
Is that correct?
My mistake. Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Good catch. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this project? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this project? Hearing none, this portion of the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any more discussion, question of staff, comments?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
My biggest problem, a couple of things here, is going to be the entrance. I mean, you say safety, so there was a traffic study done then?
Well, not a study. Our engineer, traffic engineer, did review the plans. I think he went out to the side and looked around, and that was his opinion.
They said sight view because of the, I mean, they're just saying sight view on the exit of, correct?
What was that again? I'm sorry.
The sight view exiting the property, that's the only reason why they, the safety issue?
I think the primary reason was that it doesn't meet the distance between, you have too many intersections too close to each other that have full access.
If they moved it down farther, but, I mean, I don't know how much more room it had.
I think it's still the same situation.
Same situation?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, they're liking the habit, so that's why I didn't know what the deal was there. Okay. Then on the photo, like what we're seeing right there, my opinion, I don't see anything wrong with it. You're saying that it needs to have something else added there? Is that staff's opinion?
Yeah, that's something that we can work out with the applicant. It's possible they could add a canopy over the person entrance there, the one that's cut out in the, as you can see, or something along those lines.
Well, do we then, okay, but do we need reword number five, or do we just need to take number five out?
Uh.
Because we're saying it's got to have a window, and now we're saying maybe a canopy and something, that's why I'm saying, do we just need to take that out?
Well, we said provide a fake window or something here, so.
Yeah, I think it's okay. It's pretty vague, yeah. Vague-ish.
Give some latitude.
Give some latitude, okay, so I'll make sure. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? Okay.
Madam Chair, in the matter of case twenty-two dash eight ten dash zero two, preliminary development plan for forty-five oh five South Little Blue Parkway, I move for approval with conditions, with condition six corrected such that the last word is equipment.
I second. Thank you. We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash eight ten dash zero two, preliminary development plan at approximately forty-five oh five Little Blue Parkway has been approved. Thank you very much, and thank you for your investment in the city. I'm a tiny bit competitive, so I'm happy anytime our city gets something really cool. So, thank you very much, and hope to goodness that that thing, transformer, gets here. Thank you. Case twenty-two dash one seven five dash zero two, U D O amendment number fifty-four for short-term rentals. We are ready, staff.
All right, I think the moment you're all been waiting for. A second here. All right, short-term rental amendment. All right, so first, kind of just talk a little bit about the history of kind of how we got here. Realize that there's actually a lot of cities, smaller cities mostly around our area, that actually don't have a short-term rental program or some kind of licensing program for this. So, in two thousand seventeen, staff began looking at the short-term rental situation here at the city. You can kind of see the dates there, March two thousand eighteen. There was a council study session on the topic. In May of two thousand eighteen, staff met with hotel and motel alliance to talk about, you know, how this would affect them. We also met with bed and breakfast operators as well in the area. And in two thousand, November of two thousand eighteen, the original short-term rental ordinance had passed. In late two thousand nineteen, we did make an amendment to that. It's kind of an evolving code, you know, as we see some new different types of websites and how people are renting their property. And so, there was an amendment made in two thousand nineteen that basically, that's the part that added no more than five owners to the short-term rental or can have a short-term rental. We also added the one per structure per block face, so that kind of limited where they could be at that time. And then we did include with that code amendment that the rental-ready inspection happen yearly, annually. So, these permits are annual permits that have to be renewed. So, with that, we'll kind of just jump in. The gist of it is, so everything that's currently in the code is still in there. What we did, however, is we pulled away, so bed and breakfasts as well as short-term rentals were all part of one section, and we felt it necessary to separate those out. And so, we created a new section, which we'll go through. And so, just, I'm only going to cover the topics that we changed, we added, but keep in mind, everything that was currently still in the code is still in there. It is in a new section, however. And so, the first thing I'll cover is fourteen two hundred oh five. This particular section, we did want to change some of the definitions and revise some of those, so we did change the search, and I use S T R as short-term rental, just to save space on my slides. But the definition we did create for duplex units, and we'd wanted to clarify what actually is a short-term rental and what can be used for a short-term rental. And so, for example, motorhomes, tents, recreational vehicles, portable buildings are not considered dwellings for short-term rentals. And then we did add a definition for a single-family dwelling, just to be consistent with our definitions, and defined that the short-term rental has limited to one to thirty-day stays and not considered hotels, motels, or bed and breakfasts. We did also provide a definition for a short-term rental operator, who is basically any person who is an owner of a dwelling, who offers or provides their unit up for a short-term rental use. We made modifications to section fourteen four twenty, and this is the original short-term rental code section. This is the part that had the bed and breakfast and the short-term rentals combined. And so, we basically pulled out bed and breakfast and then created the next section, which we'll see and focus in mostly on tonight as the short-term rental. So, this is a new section, fourteen four twenty-four. And these are, again, everything that was in the previous section is now in this section plus these things. And so, what we wanted to include is kind of a statement of purpose. We didn't really have that in there. We get a lot of questions sometimes as to why we require permits for this type of thing. And really, I'm just kind of summarize the definition, but essentially, we're trying to create a balance between economic opportunities for those who want to have short-term rentals while, you know, keeping those houses here and locally owned and that type of thing, but also protecting the owners, the guests, and the neighborhoods and the communities that they're in by putting these regulations together. And so, what we're allowing, basically, these, so we define this in a way where single-family and duplex dwellings are allowed to be short-term rentals, not detached accessory buildings and not multifamily housing. So, we did define that in this section before it wasn't very clear what could or couldn't be. We did want to make sure that we are capturing the transient guest tax. That was not in the previous code sections as well. And we have to have, at least when the applicant does come forward, they need to provide either the agreement with the platform that they're using. It could be VRBO or Airbnb. If they don't already have a platform to collect the transient guest tax, then we'll have to have a agreement with that particular applicant to do so. And we did add, and this is in addition to the block face, that the short-term rentals can be no closer than five hundred feet from another short-term rental property line. And so, this would kind of prevent them being clustered. And, you know, we had discussions about LLCs and, you know, the limitations of five and how you can kind of get around that. We didn't want a situation where, we can't necessarily limit somebody from creating another LLC, but we can do our best to make sure that they're not clustered in a bunch of areas, so you don't have some, you know, company that comes in and buys a whole bunch of houses in a neighborhood or a particular street or block face that can meet the block face requirement, but not necessarily now with the five hundred foot separation. We, however, did not include the separation in the arts district, and we did not create a density limitation in commercial districts. And this really has more to do with, we've had several applicants for short-term rentals in the downtown area, and in commercial areas, we do allow residential, like on the second floor, for example, so they don't necessarily fit the definitions for residential and/or duplex dwellings. And so, that is why we have excluded them from those specifications. We do now require a responsible agent to be designated and require that they have the ability to be within one hour from Independence. That responsible agent, we have put in here to be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and in the event of a complaint or a call, they must be able to respond within an hour. Doesn't mean they have to solve whatever the issue is within the hour, but they need to respond to us within the hour. Any changes to that particular responsible agent must be submitted to the city within five days. So, if there's a different property management company or somebody that they want to designate, we need to be aware of that. We did include language in here that prohibits the use of renting a short-term rental for the purposes of weddings, banquets, charitable funding, and parties. If you, and I did include that in this particular note, but we do still allow, you know, for family gatherings if somebody's renting that. So, it's not necessarily that people can't, you know, obviously be together, but the whole purpose of this is to make sure that somebody's not renting this out to have a party with more people than are allowed in the house. And of course, then we added the specification that no, nobody, not more than one booking can book a short-term rental at the same time. Just wanted to make sure that was in there. And of course, clarified that the short-term rental operator, even if it's not the owner, can't live in the unit while the unit's being rented. And this is kind of already in there, but we also made sure that the prohibiting of food, snacks, and meals to guests are not allowed in the short-term rental. And we did have the discussion about liability insurance. Although I'm sure some of the platforms may offer certain types of insurances, we are now requiring that the applicant have appropriate liability insurance up to a million dollars for the purpose of renting the short-term rental. And we also noted that the short-term rental is not transferable, and it can't move from one order to the next. If it's a new property owner, then they need to come back for another short-term rental We are requiring the use of the, what we're calling a good neighbor guideline, and that the particular applicant must place this in a easy-to-find location for the tenants that would visit. It will include things such as the maximum occupancy of the house, the evacuation plan, where the allowed parking is, how to take care of your trash service, notifies them of the noise plan, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, and who the responsible agent is to contact, and the license number of the city permit that they have posted. We are going to require the use in this particular code of noise monitoring devices. We did some pretty good research into that. They're not very expensive, and I think there's a lot of benefits to that. And I think we've seen recently, a lot of the applicants are finding that out themselves also. So, we felt it was appropriate, almost as if we see cameras in most of these places. They're not very expensive anymore, not like they used to be. And requiring them to also post their quiet hours and penalties for violations that if they break the city noise ordinances. Require parking on approved driveways and a hard surface. We do, there can be some variations of that if you look at the language that we provide in your package, primarily asphalt, concrete, but there could also be a possibility if you have pavers that are permanently installed and in good condition that can handle that type of loading. But that's now codified in this amendment, so we don't have that argument sometimes. So, again, continuing, we did create a new application process or new application, and that's in your packet. This application does, we kind of went through a lot of research to figure out what's the best way to display this, and we actually had Miranda go through and create some of these things, so it's not like you have to have AutoCAD or anything to create a floor plan. And we can certainly help an applicant do so if they need to, but we wanted to make sure that in their application that they provide to us, provides the, shows the number of rooms, the occupancy, the list of platforms that they're going to use, and the floor plan with the exits, the windows, the bath. plan with the exits, the windows, the bathrooms, kitchen, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, the evacuation plan, and their parking. So that's all going to be included in the new application that is in your packet. A testation form for the applicant to sign, making sure that they acknowledge that there's no liens on the property or outstanding taxes on the property, and that they are going to be complying or currently complying with the property maintenance code, and that they will make sure that they have working smoke detectors and fire extinguishers, and making sure that they don't expire. And the other thing, too, is, you know, we haven't necessarily had this issue, but there's a possibility that if you're in an HOA, maybe not some of the older ones, but possibly some of the newer ones, that if there's a restriction on that, that the city's made aware that there's a restriction or covenants or recorded covenants that doesn't allow you to do a short-term rental. And so, and then, of course, the nondiscrimination clause, as well as making sure that they are going to intend to post the good neighbor guidelines and provide trash, continue to provide trash service, and continue to use the noise monitoring devices as they have stated, as they have stated they would.
Thank you. Can we take a three-minute recess?
Yes.
Just for a minute. I've just want, we want to go check on Virginia real quick.
Non-residential short-term rentals, for that to be essentially a staff approval application process in commercial districts by the director, provided that they are meeting all of the terms of this particular code. One of the reasons for that is, it is a commercial district, and it was felt that it would be more to expedite those in the commercial district, but that is something that we are including in this particular amendment. If, for example, it does not get approved by the director, we did put in here an appeals process that would come to the planning commission. And so, that is a section that we've included. We did provide clarification in here for violations, penalties, and enforcement. I know that's come up several times as to what happens if somebody's not complying. They are yearly licenses, and, you know, they can be taken away, but we wanted to clarify their revocation process. And so, we really, we outlined it essentially in this code amendment. Essentially, if they have been cited for two or more offenses in a three-month period, that would kick in a revocation process. If the applicant, or if we find out that the applicant has misrepresented something, or if we feel like there's fraud or false information in their application packet, that would kick that in as well. And any violations that would endanger the public or the safety or welfare of the community or anybody around there, that would also kick that in. And of course, failure to pay your taxes and property taxes and/or sales taxes. Basically, this would require a public hearing for the revocation, and planning commission, we did put in here outlines for this group to consider in that event. And of course, those include the nature, the seriousness of the violation, impacts on the neighboring community, as well as corrective action that may or may not have been taken by the responsible agent, any prior violations at this particular site, and the likelihood of recurrence. And lastly, the entirety of that particular circumstance and the time that the applicant has had their license.
Right, Rick. We're going to, that's going to come to us?
In the event...
The public hearings for revocations are going to come to us?
Yes. Yes. Yep. And I just kind of threw this one here, business license application, because I think some people may not be aware, but this does kick in all the departments. There are physical inspections that happen with it. They are reviewed by all the departments, fire, police, utilities, et cetera, and they do go out and they conduct their inspections prior to giving any business a business license, so it's not just short-term rentals. And of course, again, they are annual, and they do require the rental-ready inspection every year as well. And with that, do we have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Rick, who's going to enforce the penalties and that? Is that going to be codes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, we would have to be either notified or made aware that there's an issue. We would go out, that would basically be a business license inspection, and we would, if necessary, kick in that revocation process.
So codes would be basically?
Yeah, it could also just be a code issue.
Okay.
But, yes, it would be...
I mean, is that stated in here that codes would take over enforcing?
We didn't put here specifically that it would be community development, but it would just be the business licensing, because that's where, it's approved through business licensing, so it would be a business licensing inspection.
Okay. Well, I mean, how, I mean, my aspect is, okay, good, they got cited, they got all this, but how are we going to know they stopped doing it?
Oh, if we do have a complaint, and, you know, we'll typically give them a period of time, and then there's a hearing to make sure that the applicant either is or isn't. It depends on what it could be. Maybe it's, it's like tall grass.
Right.
Then, we would have, we have a hearing with them. It doesn't actually go to court. If they don't resolve that in the appropriate amount of time, they could go to court, or it could kick in the revocation process. It could be both.
Okay, so it could be both?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to say, I know how it works with, like, the in-above ofiliates, like, we're inspected annually, and then we have, like, 30 days to, like, if we miss something or, right?
Yes.
So it's typically...
Yeah, typically, you'll get, typically, it's like 30 days. It's possible, as if, let's say, for example, there is an issue and you're working on it. You know, right now, we do have some of those situations where people are trying to get contractors to fix things. Maybe there's material shortages or time delays, that type of thing, so we can give extensions on that, provided we know that they are in the process of making those improvements or fixing whatever that violation is.
Okay.
If we don't hear anything, and if they were just completely ignored, then that goes to court. Or, in this situation, it could go to court, and it could come before this group for revoking.
Okay. Because I will say, they do come back, like, on that 30 days, they do come back to see if we did it, whatever it was.
One other thing, Rick, on the good neighbor guide, is that something they fill out hand to each neighbor around the area? Is that what it does?
So it just has to be posted. This is basically kind of like the rules, I guess, if you would say that we're requiring it to be posted. Very similar, I guess, if you were to look at it like a liquor license or a liquor license has to have their license.
Oh, so it's just posted at the place? Basically, then I have to send it to each?
Correct. Yeah, they have to submit that to us with an application, and that's required to get the business license, but it will also be required to be posted at the site.
You, it's not a good, I mean, I would think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and send it to each neighbor around, so they have all the information.
They can too, yes. Yeah, they could do that.
I mean, we're not, you're saying not to do that, but can we have that maybe added? I mean, I don't know if that's something good or not.
We did not put that in there, as far as, like, forcing them to hand it out to all their people around there.
Well, I mean, I would think that would be a good idea. That way, the neighbor would know exactly that's what this is being, because some neighbors do not know what's happening until all of a sudden it happens, and all of a sudden, we have all these cars, and, because I don't know, are they posting signs out in front of them that they're doing this? Like the zoning?
No. You mean, like, is it like a sign that this is a short-term rental or something like that?
Well, I mean, when they come up here before us, I know they put signs up.
Yes, yeah, for...
It's still public hearings, so they're still...
Yeah, all the public hearings are notified, yes. There is a sign in front of there when they come before us.
Okay, well, I mean, they're supposed to send the letters out. I mean, you guys send the letters out, that's why I didn't know if it...
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Now, are we going back on ones that have already been approved, or just going forward?
So this would be going forward.
Okay, so, right now, short-term rentals already have to do yearly inspect?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
So the new codes, when they come up, they'll be notified with all the new stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
On that, to clarify, so, ones that are currently within their first year prior to renewal, or however many years ahead of time prior to the next renewal, they do not have to adhere at all, or they will have to adhere to this when they renew?
When they, when they come up for their renewal is when we'll make them provide...
So they're only grandfathered for up to a year, depending on timing?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah.
For up to when this takes an effect?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is a small item, but food and meals prohibited. I've stayed in my share of Airbnbs, there's always seasoning, salt, pepper, basic stuff like that. That's not a problem?
No, not that type of thing. It's just sometimes we've, and this one, probably shouldn't say, it's not, it's hard to police that sometimes. You know, it's hard for us to know if there's a cereal box or something in a cabinet somewhere, but the intent there is to make sure it's not being treated as a food service, so that's why we have that in there.
Okay. And then, the only other thought I had was under prohibited uses. It's very clearly in your report, but prohibited uses at the end of the good neighbor guide, I think we should go ahead and specifically add parties explicitly.
Okay.
I agree.
To that one, I was wondering, because you said, "We don't mean family gatherings," but there is a, an amount of people at any event that would be too many for a neighborhood or for a neighbor. So I would like to see some kind of max number based on square footage or something.
So we do have a maximum number currently. That's the part that's kind of already existing on the number of people that can be at the short-term rental, and it's 10.
Okay.
And so, it's two, basically, it's two adults per bedroom, up to four bedrooms, and so, we allow, like, for two kids, so technically eight, and then 10 max. So 10 is the maximum number.
Is that somewhere?
Yes, that's in the, that's actually in the current code.
Okay.
Like I said, we pulled that out and put it in this section, but all that stuff remains in there. These are all the new amendments, basically.
I have about three questions.
Go ahead.
First one was, I wanted to say thank you, because I've often thought it very odd that bed and breakfasts were compared to short-term rentals, when the way it's occupied and ran is completely different. So I'm glad that you're providing some separation there. On number E, on one, on one place there, it lists some of the things, back to your question of what's not allowed, but on the good neighbor policy, those wordings are not the same, and I think they should mirror each other.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, I have little notes all over, so give me one second here. Oh, the task that we may have to do, which would be revocation that comes before us, is that ever sped up or changed due to any kind of involvement over a police matter at these locations?
I mean, with this, it would just have to be on the next available meeting. So as far as, like, speeding it up, you mean, like, having a special...
If there is a true security reason that this short-term rental should cease?
So, let's say, for example, somebody's doing something that's just completely bad, more than likely, it would be shut down, and that would be through the business licensing happening. That would be through the business licensing.
Okay.
And then, what would happen is that we would go through the process. It would almost be similar to giving somebody, like, a stop-work order if they're not in compliance, and if they haven't attempted to be in compliance. And then, that's where, it would then follow that process of being revoked. Understand, there would be a time period there to get it on the agenda and get it to this commission to consider, but, yeah, if it's something egregious like that, then more than likely, they're going to be, they're not going to be able to operate, or we're going to have to shut it down like we would a business that's not doing something.
And the way that that is written on here, at 90 days, their third offense, so does that mean on day 91, their offenses start all over?
You know, we had to put in kind of a timeline that we thought would be reasonable. One of the things, and that's kind of where we put in that consideration for how long the person's had an applicant, or had a permit or a license. Say, for example, somebody's had a license for five years and may have had no issues until they happen to rent to somebody, and for whatever reason, they've got three of these. So it's, it's a question, then, of, is it because the owner or the applicant is doing something inappropriate, or do they just happen to, you know, lease this or rent this thing out to somebody, and they just happen to get a couple of bad apples? And so, that's part of what would have to be considered. But it's not necessarily clear-cut in that sense, but we did feel like we had to have some kind of specification to define what does it mean to start, you know, revoking their permit.
And then, I kind of brought this up last time, so I just run it on the record. Did a little research on Airbnbs in our city. There is currently an RV parked on a driveway that is listed as an Airbnb in Independence. There's currently an apartment in a multi-unit family dwelling that is listed as an Airbnb. So how are we going to work to better ensure that anybody operating as an Airbnb is playing by their rules?
So that's a, I mean, it's a very good question. A lot of what we do, again, we're limited to, you know, entrapping people and trying to determine if they're operating illegally. So a lot of what we do is, we do rely on the public to notify us if something looks wrong, and that's when we go in and do our inspections. Sometimes, you know, that is not just a question of short-term rentals, it's a question of other, maybe illegal businesses running out of people's homes. We always run into that issue where we get calls that there's a bunch of people parked in front of a house, and sometimes we will go and catch it, but in many cases, it's after hours, and we're not there to see it. And it's kind of like a police officer, you got to see it in order to address it. And so, but really, short of recontinuing to figure out the best way to track down people that are operating illegally, that is how we're currently looking at it, is we have to really rely on, you know, our own inspectors going around noticing things, as well as the public notifying us.
So if you see something, say something, and who do, so depending on what department should respond, is who a public citizen should report to?
Yeah, I mean, again, exactly. And they can do that, obviously, to community development. They can also do it to a police department, and if it does, if it goes to the police department, and they know it happens to be a short-term rental, they'll notify us as well.
There is also the city application, the website, that you can use to report?
Yes.
Issues?
Yes, there is.
Is there enough detail and so on? There's a lot of options that you can pick from when you're trying to report an issue in your neighborhood. Is there enough detail in there to where that application will say, "This is a short-term rental issue"?
You know, it probably doesn't say specifically, "Short-term rental." It's been a while since I've actually looked at the portal for that, but that's a very good question. We can take a look and see if there is a way to provide an option to report specifically that, a short-term rental.
I am also grateful that you took the time to address so many of the issues that I know that have come up over the past, what, two, three years, whatever it's been. And I feel like you've done an incredible job of addressing all of them. And I was just thinking about reminding myself that even the ones like the ninety-day one, the nice part about it is everybody has to be, for the most part, if they're smart, they're with VRBO or Airbnb. So there is a catch, because people, if they have a bad experience, do report it and they do shut you down. So at least there is kind of a, a multi-layered thing, so I feel a little better about that. I do think, like, I, I, I don't know whether this really comes out of the, under our purview or not, but it would be nice to have, like, some PSAs go out in, in a campaign form or somehow that where people could report these, because it is kind of off the radar unless you are attuned to short-term rentals. And then, you know, I kinda shared with you an idea that I had that is kinda crazy. But how can we incentivize some of these people who don't have their business license, you know? And maybe it is on the city's website, we list those legitimate Airbnbs that have perfect track rec, records and deserve that free advertising, you know, you get to be on the, listed on the city website. I mean, I think as a person, if it was linked to my Airbnb website, that I am listed on the city as a safe place. I would feel good, I don't know.
Yeah, I think from the, the PSA's standpoint, if it's, you know, I thought, I was thinking about this too, but I'm not sure what is appropriate for city staff to advocate for. Um, I mean, it's, it's kinda the opposite of entrapment, it's more, you know, citizens do the right things, but if you put it in the utility newsletter, or just social media, or something along those lines, I don't know what the right answer is, and I'm, I'm curious what is appropriate or not.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, I, I do need to have a discussion with our PIO officer on what would, what would or wouldn't be appropriate. It would seem to me that if we have licensed businesses, that we would be able to do something with those that are licensed. But yes, that is a discussion that I would still need to have with our, um, public information officer.
It's hard, and I know we're not alone in this conversation, I mean, other cities are dealing with this. But I think that's one thing, that other thing, I just appreciate so much about you, because you have evolved with it. I mean, as things have come up, you guys are attacking it quickly, as quickly as a city can.
Yeah, and one thing I didn't kinda end with is, keep in mind, this is gonna be an evolving code, I think. And we've kinda had some discussions about this with new different types of websites coming out. Um, homeroom and how do we deal with some of these almost long-term rental situations? But it's not just, it's not just gonna be this, it could be, you know, people renting out their backyards for parties or, uh, some of the event amenities that somebody may have in their home, you know. It's gonna have to evolve, I think, with the times and, and whatever, um, digital platforms are out there. I mean, I think you can kinda see kinda where we started from and how, you know, where we're at today. We don't necessarily want it so overbearing that, um, it's, it's even hard for staff to, to manage. But, um, we just have to play that balancing act as far as, you know, what, what's new out there? What problems are we having and is there a way to address that in our codes? And so, I, I don't, I, I see this having to probably be updated again in the future. I think it's gonna be somewhat of a fluid document as, as the times change.
Well, it's human nature, it seems like, find the loopholes, so we're just trying to be three steps ahead of everybody is tough.
I did have one other question, can you walk through, we had talked just very briefly before about moratorium on current applications?
So we did submit a, a resolution to council to put a moratorium on short-term rentals while this process was going through. So, um, I believe that's on the next meeting. Council meeting, and so we, we hope that that does get, um.
But the expectation would be that these new rules and regulations, this new code, would get through, submitted? By next year?
Yes, now, keep in mind, we do have some already in the process. And so those wouldn't necessarily apply to that moratorium. Um, I assume the council could change that if they just chose to do so, but, um, that wasn't the intent. The intent was to prevent more future ones coming forward. And of course, if we do get an application, you know, we'll just have to let the applicant know, hey, look, it's, you know, your, your application's going to be put on hold, um, until that gets resolved or until this issue gets approved. So hopefully, it wouldn't be too long, but, but yes, we, we're kinda working towards that.
I think it's important, just take a breath, take a beat. I open this to the public, correct? Any more discussion? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this, in a positive way, for this amendment? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Come on up, state your name and your address.
Thank you, my name is Lee, my last name is Phillips, I live at one four two three South Maywood Avenue, Independence, Missouri six four zero five two. My statement is very short, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I am pleased to see that some attention is being paid to the short-term rental regulations and for considering safety concerns for our neighborhoods. However, I am hopeful that this is not the final revision. There appear in conversation and on paper to be many unresolved issues regarding this topic. I'm hoping that you will not approve this specific as it stands, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? All right, thank you. All right, um, hearing no other comments, the public portion of this case is closed. Um, commissioners, any more comments or discussions?
I have a question, um, so the number five, that you can own five, how, can you talk to me about how?
So I think, um, I don't know, Stuart, if you're familiar with how they initially came up with it. Um, I think one of the things that we do a lot of times is that we research other cities and kinda determine what, um, we, we do kinda wanna know what others are doing and see if it makes sense. Um, I don't know if there was a specific reasoning behind it, but I think it felt as if five particular short-term rentals by an owner would be an appropriate amount to limit. But again, as, as we kinda discussed before, that doesn't stop somebody from creating an LLC, which there becomes a different owner, essentially, and having another five, and another five, and another five. Um, there really just is no good way, at least from our research, to prevent that. Uh, and therefore, that's why we put in the five hundred foot from another, so we don't see a cluster of uh, maybe some kinda out-of-town investors per, purchasing, you know, an entire cul-de-sac or something to rent out. And so that was the intent of trying to at least mitigate that to the best of our abilities.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, what's the comment from the, from the people is, what, I mean, to me, it sounds like a good plan, I mean, I don't see anything wrong, I mean, I don't know, there is a couple of words that need to be fixed. But, I mean, in my opinion, I don't see anything else that we can add to it at this time. I mean, yes, there's gonna be things come up in the future, so, I mean, I say this is a good plan to move forward with, in my opinion.
Okay, I think it's got some teeth that we haven't had in the past. And, um, and I, you know, I've been reading a lot about this too, and there's kind of an Airbnb bust going on right now. They're, they're less popular, they're being less used. And, um, so sometimes I think these things could work themselves out in tha, in that way. But I'm also concerned about some of the things coming up in our city in the next few years. Which is why I'm, I, I, I mean, I think five is a good number, but I am nervous about out-of-town investors buying up property. You know, right before the World Cup, or, and then leaving us high and dry. But I guess the thing is, we, there's no way to figure that out, I, I mean.
There's no way to predict every thing that can happen. So I think we have to do the best that we can as a, you know, from city staff and as a, as a, as a commission. And I think, and I've only been here for a couple of years, but it, it seems like we respond as quickly as we can to things that come up and, and will pivot as we need to, so I appreciate that about, about the city. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Phillips, I just wanted to thank you, because you spoke eloquently at a council meeting not too long ago. And it really spurred me to research this a lot. Um, and it helped me form an opinion about future short-term rentals. So, um, words matter, your feelings matter, but mostly just coming and speaking really does matter.
I agree, it, it does matter very much to hear a citizen's voice, because you're experiencing it, you know, firsthand. And, and so, we do appreciate that very much. I mean, I feel like, um, you know, you can't respond to absolutely everything. But I feel like the, the things that you did change, it may not be easy to see, but I think you did address a lot of the safety issues. And that it's kind of a, I don't know, a domino kind of a thing, because you've got, you have some safeguards in place. Like I said, with the Airbnb, you do have the police in place, you do have, we have some layers to kinda prevent that. And I like that the way you've worded some of the things, I think it's kinda like that catch. That yes, can go away at some point, but to your point, it's, it's evolving. And this is not like a end-to-end, so that's, that's good.
Heck, I did just think of another question I wrote down. I don't know where it was, but it talked about minimum level of insurance. What determines minimum, how much is not enough?
So we basically put in a million, typically, a lot of our.
I saw the word minimum, I didn't see a million.
Yeah, a minimum of, of a million of liability coverage, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case twenty-two one seven five dash zero two to amend UDO number fifty-four, short-term rental amendments.
I second.
Well, there's, there's not conditions, but did, we, we did make a recommendation that the Good Neighbor Guide be, have the language aligned more specifically with the language in the code. There was, there was a few things that were, maybe just not quite as consistent, like the word parties and some of those other things, just that, that could be an ongoing. A working perpetual draft, as an E B, but whatever the, and maybe it's the, maybe it needs to be reworded that it's the current. Current version of the good, you know, of the Good Neighbor Guide is, is what is posted. I don't know, I'll do that.
So I would basically have it as making sure the Good Neighbor Guide meets the current code as well as adding no parties to it.
Is there a second? Thank you, did I not, just not hear you, I'm sorry. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Sheriff McClain?
Yes, case number twenty-two dash one seven five dash zero two, UDO amendment number fifty-four for short-term rentals has been approved and will now go to council. Thank you very much. Um, roundtable, next meeting is November fifteenth. And Billy tried, Commissioner Preston tried to come tonight, but it didn't work out, so maybe next time, November fifteenth.
Yeah, just a reminder, we only have one meeting in November and one in December.
Yeah.
I have a question about something, is this a good time to bring it up?
It's roundtable.
Okay, um, there is an absolutely gigantic campaign sign on twenty-third and Nolan Road. It has, it, it, it's, it can't be up, up to code, right? I mean, is, also, it's on, um. Yes, which, I don't think, and, I mean, do they have to get permission from whoever owns that space? I'm just, I just would love to know that.
This is on the northwest corner of that intersection?
Yeah.
Where the gas station and the tire place used to be?
Right, now they're gonna make a dental office supposedly.
That's right, um. I don't know, yeah, that, that's too big, I can tell you that.
It's way too big.
To my knowledge, I was told that political science could only be four by eight and they gotta be in the ground or something to hold them sta, stable. That, that's what I remember hearing back in the past. I mean, and then they can't be on residential property four by eight, they can only be yard signs.
Would this be a good opportunity to use the city's application to cite a potential violation?
We'll turn that over to code compliance tomorrow.
Thank you. All right.
And just cause I'm the newbie, November fifteenth, what are we doing?
We'll be here.
But it's a roundtable, so.
Oh, it's just announcing.
Oh, oh, just, okay.
Just announcing.
Now, staff, I see there's nothing in December, is that correct right now, this, at this time?
Well, the deadline for, for December hasn't come up yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, there was nothing that I saw on there, that's why.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two.